Very good.
Okay, thank you, plus Steve.
All right, thank you.
Um apologies for absence.
From the market.
Thank you, we accept that.
Yeah.
And any declarations of interest, personal prejudice of interest or consideration this agenda? No, thank you very much. And do we agree the minutes of the Environment Committee meeting sell on the 7th and the 25th, 10th October and 25th November in 2024?
Yep.
Yep.
Agreed.
Thank you. Okay, item four, we've got Mr. Cavender, Terry. Um apologies, I think there's an autocorrect going on there and then.
I've been called for that.
Cavendish. Our apologies for that, just make it clear that it is Mr. Terry Cavender. Um so if you'd like to give us your presentation, please.
Absolutely, see if we can make the technology share its magic.
Thank you.
Uh. That button, that one was everything we have got, but again, yeah, so it says it's doing it. Well, it's done it, amazing. So, good evening all, thank you for having me along. Um many of you know me from years and years and years, we've sat around this at many other tables. Um so I apologize if I'm repeating some stuff, I hope you've got some new and exciting bits and pieces this evening to whet your appetite, water being the key theme, you see what I did there?
Yeah.
There are a few more of those to come, so see if you spot them as we go along. Um I want to make your show. And you're welcome to read that, but I'm going to summarize it. In 1905, the town council, hello town council, and lots of shiny new Victorian invention called sewer. And they wondered where they were going to put all this brown smoke. They decided that the old canal wall behind what has now been BP garage would be a wonderful place to put it all. Because it will float away in the canal. You and I know that it doesn't float, it sinks. And it made the weeds grow, the weeds were good, the weeds did thrive, but that was okay, but we had all the displaced agricultural workers who'd been displaced by the new fang of steam engines and thrashers and all this stuff. So they were put to work cutting the weeds and paying the princely someone to add a penny a week or something. Of course, those poor socks went off to the first world war and half of them never came back. So throughout the war years, the weeds did grow. 1937 was the last boat to come along, and I can pat on about that historical bit for ages and ages and ages. But it's a very interesting link between the canal and sewage, which we shall come back to another time. All sorts of things. And you'll have a presentation to share afterwards, anyway, so it's an exciting one. Anybody who hasn't been down Mawson Meadow can go and sit on the naughty step afterwards. This is what it looked like the second year after we re-auded it and what it looked like throughout Coventon. It's a brilliant place, we've got a county, the Vouch, that's by Birk, Buckinghamshire, obviously the Wildlife Trust, and nature recorder who lives on England Village, Michael, he goes over there every couple of months and records what he sees. He's known eight different types of butterfly, four of which are on the engine. I won't go through the rest of the list itself on the screen for you, but it's a wonderful place to get kiddies engaged in nature, people engaged in nature, dogs engaged in nature, because they're not generally chasing where it's in. There are snakes and some people go, oh, what's the nature about down there then? Corn snakes, grass snakes, all sorts of exciting things. And one of the grass snakes is a great swimmer. And I think it's a he, come on, I'm told, he does the sort of in the basking evening sun swim back and forth across the canal, eating various things and you manage to come across it in the water. So there we go. Which brings me nicely onto biodiversity, you see what I did there? It's a good segue. And biodiversity, so these are the four reasons we restored the canal. And you may be surprised not to see boats on there. Because everybody thinks about canals being boats. Regrettably, in this day and age, boats is a very expensive hobby, pastime. It's seen by some as a cheap way to live, and it probably is cheaper than some houses, but it's still a bloody expensive hobby. And so we sort of put the leisure activity there in the bottom of the four pillars, and under that fourth pillar is where boats would fit. But biodiversity environment, the second part, Meadow, why did we do that first? It's an exemplary section for grant applications, and it's the way the canal restoration has gone across the whole country over the past 75 years since the first rebellion against shutting the canals happened. 75 years this year, special event coming at Foxton, the details are available, that we know. Um and over that time, the established practice has been, take one end of the canal, it doesn't matter in the end, but generally the end that's furthest away from water. We saw it, people say, bloody hell. And some people around this table mean, said, plenty of help, Terry, you've got all the ground with water in it, so you're taking 21 years, what's next? We said, we're off to Cosgrove, build a bridge, build a bridge, don't be stupid. Oh, we did. And water placement is the McCain line for the discussion this evening. I'm conscious of timing and I'm patting on, so I'm going to drive through and get that. We have, as a country, two little water where needed, we have too much in a long place, that's called flooding. Okay. And you will notice that we seem to suffer from plenty of water in the wrong place in Buckingham. And I've been patting on since about 2006, about using something called a canal, which you refer to in Lord Pitt's inquiry from the Gloucester floods of 2007, as being a linear flood tenor. Long as it's hard in the ground, call it a canal, chuck the water in there and get it away when we don't want to. Interesting. So, lots more here about that, and I don't actually want to stop on this one. If you imagine, depending on how good your geography is, we all know where north is, it's up there, we know where south is, it's down there. And if you know where Watford is, just before Watford, there's a place called Richmond's Wells. Richmond's Wells has a wonderful place, gets like a wonderful supplier called Affinity Water. You may or may not know, seven forty, you can definitely know about it. Affinity water are getting fine just about every day, because they're taking too much from their boreholes. The water that comes out of the boreholes is below the threshold, as in the level, in which in a way it is heavily, I'll put it politely, it needs more treatment to get rid of the minerals that are dissolved in it and everything else. Therefore, it's costing them more money to produce each megaliter of drinking water. So much so, they're looking to invest several millions of pounds to buy effluent, which has been highly treated, so you get raw sewage, you get treated sewage, you get effluent, which is quite well-treated sewage. You then get treated effluent, which is good enough to put into a river. You then get highly-treated effluent, which is basically good enough to put into your garden pond and let you fish. You wouldn't necessarily want to bottle it and drink it at that stage, but this wonderful company called Seven Trent Water are looking to take all of the effluent out of Birmingham, treat it in Coventry, and then instead of discharging it into the river, they're going to discharge it into the Grand Union Canal. And it's going to be brought down through various engineering feats, which will be akin to the Victorian outcomes of building canals in the first place. To be fed down the canal south to Richmond's Wells, no affinity will buy that water and pay the Canal and River Trust a transportation charge using the canal as a way of helping to fund the canal. So some crazy blokes sat here in a greeny-blue t-shirt, talking to you, from the Canal Society, had a moment in the bathtub, I think it was in the shower, actually. There was definitely water in the public. And went to an exhibition last summer where OFWAT were absolutely water regulators of the UK. And got talking to a lady from OFWAT who said, yeah, that's really interesting, Terry, you ought to apply to one of our funding streams. Uh, this one's probably a bit big because it's two to 10 million. This one's probably a bit small, which one's two million, whichever one you want to go for, you're going to need to partner with a water lord. Well, since the canal was surrounding waters everywhere, I sort of went, hello, hoes. I ended up speaking to a lady who's the strategic director of water supply, who put me in touch on her team. And long story cut short, Edward Richardson manages WRMP24, WRMP29, anyone know what WRMP is? No, come on, it's your duty. You guys know what WRMP is? Ah, there you go, it's the education fund, if the Water Resources Management Plan, do you admit it's a strategic business plan for the next five years, where multiple water companies then all of a sudden uh turn around and say, oh, in 2025, we think we're going to deliver this much water, because that's how much people want. And will it be less than that that they need, or will it be more than that? I bet it'd be more than that for the building houses. How much effluent will we produce? Will it be less than that or more than that? And every year, they have to report to OFWAT how those lessons were, and every five years, they have to come up with a new plan that covers the next five years in detail and the next 50 years at a very sort of rudimentary level. Anyone who hasn't noticed house building in Milton Keynes, obviously must drive out through Oxford and never ever travel east. And they've already been told by Tracy Alder, I think some of you remember, maybe DC days, that there's not enough water in the taps for everyone in Milton Keynes to sit on at the same time. Let alone in 50 years' time. So my new friend, Ed Richardson, is looking for innovative and crazy ways to supply water to Milton Keynes in the next 50 years. At the moment, all of Milton Keynes' water comes from boreholes in the east of England. Norwich, Ipswich, everywhere else is piped across. Everything to the west of a line sort of up the M1 is surface water derived, on board occupied, including Northampton and various other places, Davenport Tree. So we get our water from Graffham, Osebwa, and we get our water from Pittsford and these links to Davenport Tree. There's two present ones, one's with the canal, et cetera, lots of boring stuff. Long story short, the 50-year flag is to produce a new water treatment station in the vicinity of Dean Sanger to supply Milton Keynes and all of the surrounding area, including this funky little place of the fireman. And using various surface water sources. Oh, they're also going to grab some of our effluent from Coventry, bring it along, we restored for now, while Osner to the nearby treatment works of Dean Sanger and use that to acquire a water source when they need it. Oh, and there's a crazy proposal from Terry Cavender to Anglian Water that we build a whole load of balancing lakes along the Hughes Valley between the canal and the river and on the other side of the river. Those who don't know, sorry, turning my back on you, I'll do the demonstration there for you guys as well. River valley, river at the bottom, canal up here, distance in height is roughly about 10 metres, most aware on the valley. The distance in width is anything between 10 metres and about 500 metres. So there's plenty of opportunities along there. Most of you will be aware of the quarrying that goes on at Passam, that's done with phase one. Although they're phase two, or phase three, or phase four, because the only place that the gravel is for building all these houses is where the river puts it. There's the Bax Council Minerals and Waste Policy, adopted by Buckinghamshire Council when it became unitary, uh which is a 25-year document, life, got that 20 years to go, I think, on, something like that. And in there, we have an amendment policy, policy number 25, I know that, it's Christmas Day, um which refers to restoration of the canal along the valley as part of all quarrying operations. So when you're ready together, you get the quarrying that will help produce balancing lakes, that will help produce water storage along with wetlands, funded by Anglian Water Capital Investment in the treatment programme for Millers and Keens, which is projecting order of magnitude 1.5 billion, that is with a B. And the canal restoration and balancing lake proposal comes in at around about 190 to 200 million of that money at this point in time. What the hell does that got to do with flooding? But if you now go and walk from where the town hall was behind BP Garage and follow the footpath all the way around the school and everything, that's the route of the old canal. Borton Hill, where the health tub used to be, is where the mill waste used to weir over and feed the canal. Anyone who knows any history and geography? And the proposal is a couple of high-capacity pumps in there, again funded by Anglian Water, would, when needed, move that water into the canal. It would then flow by gravity along the canal with a height above normal nominal freeborn, as we call it in canal world, of about an extra 30 centimetres a foot to those in old money. At this end, that would taper off as it goes down there, weir off into all these balancing lakes along the valley, storing the balancing lakes during the wet season. And when it's dry season and there's not enough people from the river, people in Milton Keynes, or indeed here to turn that taps on, it would be released from the balancing lakes into the river, abstraction further down to be taken into treatment works and provide the possible supply for the community. I'm probably getting to the end of my chat time, so I'll take the rest of it through questions. There's probably a couple of little bits in here, just to say, the Lough Pen canal in Wales has been doing this for about 150 years. Yeah, so it's not new. Um, these are the, that's all the heritage, well-being, looking, you know, all sorts of funny funky charts and things, all sorts of pictures of us, a whole load of history about weeds and stuff, most of which I've covered. Biodiversity, that isn't the only thing that happens at that. And for an example, the, blurb, blurb, stats, legal structures, parties, trustees, all the other stuff, you can read in there. This is Hyd Lane, this is Hyd Lane Lock, which was stabilized, I hate to use the word restored, because they use cement. You can't use cement on historical structures, it's nasty. And one of the bridges we restored, and I mentioned other bridges, this is a ghost view as it catches up. Well, next, next, ghost view of the original bridge, the building site of what we went to Cosgrove to build a bridge. Build a bridge, you can't do that, you can't do students to do lime water and stone dressing and restoration. And lots of pretty pictures of building a bridge, and blurbly hold on the left-hand picture that's like coming up. Won't catch up. Tear on ice cream, there you go. And that's the bridge we built, I hate it, it's horrible, it's what the heritage officer wanted. I didn't say about building a bridge, I said, I've got restored it now, the bridge was not in the way because it needed one. So I don't make any pities for the aesthetics and the bridge building, I don't know if I've got time to catch up, no. But this is some of the other crazy work we've got in there. So at that point in time, I'm going to stop talking to start this thing.
Thank you very much indeed, very interesting, so.
Sorry, that was 11 years.
Well, Lucy.
So the balancing ponds and the canal scheme to alleviate flooding, is that something that is actually going to happen? Or is it a plan that needs to be accepted and clustered and?
So as part of the Water Resources Management Plan 29 process, OFWAT require organisations to make a bid to be part of the water supply. You say, we're buttoned, our society was made of the brilliant question of the transit, which is stage one of 18. I'm not sure whether it's stage one to 18, or stage one to anything, we don't really know what it is. And I think it was a ladder to climb, that's one at the bottom, we're on the bottom run, we gave that to Anthony Water and they went, we like it. So far, the number of competing bids that you've got are none. Uh, it fits with their entire strategy of surface water everything to the west of M1.
Right.
Um, it fits within their budgetary numbers. So they are now building out, and we're having meetings with them every two months during this year. They're building that out into a full bid at step 18 to take forward. They're doing most of the work for us, we've got to do some of the work with them. And one of the things, one of the reasons to come tonight is A, to tell you, Lord, there is hope. And B, to say, if you'd like to, we'd love you to endorse the approach, love you to endorse the involvement and all that kind of great stuff. We're not going to do the same to the Shire Council and asking them to be supportive of it, and away we go from that. So it is part of a process, we're being told all the right noises, but it's not once and it's over.
Thank you, so I've got John, then I've got Anya.
Okay, there's a lot of information to absorb, but you appreciate that, obviously, Terry. But in my right understanding, that the core idea is that when there's a lot of water coming down the river, to extract that water somewhere near Borton Mill and move it into the canal system, you have to be beyond, um you know, beyond where your biodiversity, because that obviously ends on the house, you can't fill that up anymore. But there's further stream, to build it downstream, and then that becomes like a, like a bank of water and that the Milton Keynes will be able to draw on, when then you feel a draw on it.
To be pedantic, the treatment plant will be able to draw, to supply Milton Keynes, all of the communities.
Yeah, that's, well.
So all of the villages, yeah, Bowes Newtown, we can't say Toaster yet, but who knows? Yeah, and all of that great stuff.
Okay, okay, so given that, given that water will be extracted from the river at Borton Mill, will that therefore reduce the, reduce the likelihood of flooding in the town further upstream?
Short version is, I believe so. Medium version is, there is a hydrological study being done by Anglian Water as part of this, which has now been extended to the upper roots, all the way to the source of Anglian Water. So we are looking at the whole group and its network. My belief and work I did on flooding circa 2010 is that the two pitch points in the town are the 413 not quite bypass, down by Paragon.
Bypass.
And the London Road Bridge. So London Road Bridge causes backup. The 413 not quite bypass causes pitch point. And all the water in Linden Village from Page Hill, surface water floods down into the back of the BP garage and swells the pitch point, causes a lot of the flooding, even between the two of them. And that causes more backup to the west on London Road. So by taking more water out at Borton Mill, a nominal amount during nominal flow, which.
Running more down.
Then having high-capacity pumps in there that during times of peak flow can move 10 times as much water, made up number, into the canal. And that shifts it out of the town, that creates more capacity for that water to come down from behind the university into the town section, which is now nominally other. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah. Does Dean say, does Dean say anything about it?
I think maybe some people in Dean's area know about it, but I doubt if all the residents do, but if they could sit down and turn on all their taps.
Well, they can watch, they can watch this, can't they?
So that was one of my questions, but just for clarification, this will involve restoring or recreating, I suppose, the canal on stretches where it's currently not visible. So Loch Medaw, for example, which I know quite well, because my boss lives there, and beyond, there isn't actually currently. I can, I'm not, I can sort of tell where it should be, but it's not currently there.
All of the canal channel still exists, and a lot of places it's been built in and is therefore not visible. But if you actually go and dig a hole, you will find the old play liner.
Yeah.
Borton, yes. And there are segments that are gone, God bless those from the Shire Council, but in about 1990, god, it must have been 1991 or 92, the catastrophic bends between Leighton and Stettum were widened and they stole the aqueducts that used to carry the canal across the street. But in reality, all that is, is 12 concrete pipes laid side by side and very easy to remediate, so.
Hmm, thank you, and that's part of the bit, is the money to restore the canal. Okay, thank you. You've got big.
Yeah, was it Richard Ancock you said you spoke?
Ed Richardson.
Ed Richardson.
Ed Richardson, all right, okay, it's different, I forgot to do that. Um, I'm aware that this scheme being discussed by the environmental agencies in my correspondence, I'm aware they're discussing a lot of things. Um, this matter of hydraulics, which it's all about really, it's moving water from one place to another, which you can't do now because it hasn't got any way of doing it. And I think it's right that you said it's a dissolved figure. Is there a time span, I think when they're working too, because government-type big projects tend to have very, very long time spans and, and spread over different people's lifetimes, don't they? So have they, have they got a time span for this?
Yeah, I mean, for what it says, the, the process ends up probably in about two years' time. Probably with the formal proposal into OFWAT. They concurtate on it for about 15 months. And then about a year before the WRMP 29 deadline, they turn around and go, oh, Yorkshire, do that one, out of your ABC criteria. Or tend to do that one and that one out of your A to F criteria. And, oh, Anglian Water, you've only got one, you're going to do it, it's Terry's scheme. And that's when the investment gets locked in. The good thing is the funding comes through OFWAT and the Water Government, not through government directly. Therefore, it's not going to be involved, obviously change of government or that stuff. And what it says, it expects it's a five-year capital build from 29 to when they've got the processing plant in place. So there's basically something like about eight years before it's online producing the water. During which time they've got to pump more and more and more out of the ground. And they're also looking at getting as much as they possibly can out of the affinity transfer scheme.
Just, I'm, I'm aware through my correspondence that I've, when we first spoke some time back and you gave admission to it, I, I, I've made the cabinet member for climate change aware of this.
Good.
He has got all your slides and it's part of the conversation, which is linear across all these things. At what point will you try to get in to talk to them? Because 2025 is an unusual year for the council.
Yeah.
And it, it, it seems that because of the time span of it, you can't wait until after May and then go and pick on.
My, my gut reaction is, I'm meeting with Anglian Water, February next Friday, in fact, not this Friday, the following Friday, and by a team, and then the April meeting, we do face-to-face and hunting them, and we're alternating like that through this year. So when I've had the next face-to-face, I'll be in a position to turn around and say, here's the draft timeline. That's why I'm going to be able to sit down with the Shire Council and say, this is not Terry Cavender communicating slides and saying, yeah, this is Anglian Water saying, here's an early draft of a proposal that I've taken to OFWAT.
Lastly, at what timeframe do you need the town council to discuss this, to support it, if that was the case?
It would be good to have that, in my mind, I see me going to the Shire Council something like September, October, and it would be good to have town councils at all either.
Thank you.
I've got Lucy. Um, so I mean, from what you're saying, it sounds like it's in Anglian Water's best interests, as long as it has best interests to go along with this, because it's going to solve their water issue in a, or water shortage issue in a more cost-effective way than them constantly importing water from elsewhere.
It should also introduce the opportunity to, in my mind, not get it fully discussed by Anglian Water, but just take a bloody great discharge of the treatment works here, sewage treatment works, to take the afterland down there to that treatment works, which alleviates this treatment works and the capacity that all the issues were, happening with the new housing and everything else, it starts to run into that.
I've got, I'm going to say Anthony first, she has a straight, yeah, and just put your hands up, and then John.
Just a quick one, Terry. Um, I represent the town council on the NBP PC, you know, the North Bucks. Have you spoken to Pat Hardcastle about doing this presentation to them? Because there'll be parish councils along that route who would be very interested in hearing of it.
Not yet, is the short answer, again, but I want to get to the stage where I've got an artifact, there's a lot, I can walk along there, ideally with a timeframe, because the question you're asking. Ideally with a timeframe, because the question you've asked tonight are exactly the questions of everyone of those who is here. Now, I look forward to having a lateral, it might be a pre read. And say, here's part of the answer to your first ten questions, can I have questions eleven to twenty please?
I was just thinking in, in terms of getting them onside early and, and then you're pushing at open doors.
Yeah, yeah, completely, completely agree. And as I say, I prefer to be in that position after April, when I have a meeting in Huntington, to then start talking to them. I'm simply, I'm thinking of having a an open workshop of getting people along to say, it's a crazy idea. And each parish centre wants to have people to come chat about it. And let's give you all, say, answers to the questions one to ten, now tell me what questions are going to travel.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
John?
Well, I propose that we ask the town clerk to prepare a short report for the next meeting of the Environment Committee to, with a view to passing a more enthusiastic motion that, that, that Terry's talking about. So we've got some data here from Terry, we can, we can pass a motion at the next meeting, because it's not on the agenda today, but we can ask the town clerk to have a report. So at the next meeting, we can say, we fully support this idea, thinking this could impact positively on the town and generally on our neighbours, um, in downstream along the river. So something along those lines, that we have a, a draft motion to discuss, I don't expect anything, and we ask the town clerk to put together a report to enable that.
Okay, so we, we do have a motion coming next on the agenda, which is, um, on those sort of lines, because it's not just about that, there are other things that the EA and other, other bodies are looking at. Um, so I think that possibly could be.
Yeah, it doesn't mention this specifically, though. I wonder what needs to be specifically to enable and help Terry drive it forward with Angling Water. Because your vote in the question is generic. I wonder whether we need something more specific. We do have many of your motion to add something specific, okay? Or.
Because I've got it done. Why I left, write it, in, in the manner I wrote it, in order that we could discuss it and decide whether, whether we wanted to add specifics to it.
Well, you just add we not Terry to the.
Which now is the same.
Is that Mr. Cavendish or Mr. Cavendish? Okay, Robbie.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I mean, the, the reason, there are other things going on. So in drafting, John, drafting a specific worded motion has to be very careful. We don't include those other things which we know about, which are taking place. So the Chair believes drafting that motion to be not specific to allow us at a later stage, because the trouble is, some of these schemes might come on board quicker than this. And we'll be in a situation where the council can't comment on those schemes because we'll be in an electoral period. But by doing the first thing, it allows the council, if agreed, to be supportive. And we've already taken that decision in principle. And, and so I, I think that was where it was going. And I think these are, there's several, there's two other schemes in the area, which aren't necessarily yet got to the public domain. So, so I think that this is one of three different things of, well.
At least three.
For at least three, if not four. So.
Okay.
Just, just a little bit of color to that. Um, obviously, the great thing about this scheme is regardless of what else is done with leaking dams or upstream contamination or whatever, this solves a different problem, but it's also supportive of flooding dimension.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, thank you very much, Terry.
And one last slide, um, that is flexible canal being restored. So we've got two hundred and fifty metres to the bridge. We've got five hundred metres from the bridge and we're now halfway to the A five. Absolutely, so we're coming this way, regardless of what happens with Angling Water, we're still restoring.
Good. Thank you. Excellent. Thank you very much. More than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, certainly, um, to, um.
I suspect my wife is going to be, um.
The, the motion, um, which is next on the agenda, but thank you very much for your time. Please keep in touch with us, um, with whatever progress goes on.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
I'll hang on ten minutes. I, I know she was at work and hadn't quite heard.
Okay. Um, so the next item on the agenda is the motion, um, which reads, this committee supports further feasibility studies to be undertaken by other agencies regarding flood mitigation prevention strategies at sites both up and downstream of Buckingham as well as sites in the town itself. Um, as I've just said before, the reason I've, I've written it like that is so that we can have an open discussion about it and, um, see whether we want to actually put a little more detail into it or not do so at all. Um, I didn't see who had them. I think Lucy actually had her hand up first.
Um, may I propose an amendment that this committees, this committee supports further feasibility studies, um, something along the lines of, including but not limited to the, um, scheme proposed by Terry Cavender, um, as well as other agencies regarding flood mitigation prevention strategies. Or something to that effect, so that we've got Terry's, um, scheme in there specifically. Um, but we're also saying that it includes the other ones, which we haven't had specifics of as yet.
And you know.
I obviously have no problems with this, because, you know, why would we not? Is the question. I wonder whether it, I'm not entirely certain what we are expecting it to do, other than to express our general support, which I'm more than happy to express. However, and, and I, I, even when I read it first, I thought like, what's this meant to do? What, what will it allow us? What action will it allow us to take? And now having heard Terry's presentation, and we've had a chat about this at one of your very stalls somewhere before. I think what you will need at some point and what others might potentially need from the town council is a written letter of support by the town, uh, town clerk, expressing the council's support for a particular scheme. So do we need this mo-, I mean, we should pass it anyway, I think, but do we need this motion in order to make that happen? And is it sufficient to make it happen? And I don't think it is. I think we will need to discuss each scheme in detail and express our support for each of those. So that's my slight, not unease, it's just the question of what do we expect us to do?
Okay. Robert.
I think Lucy put something up very well. I think what Lucy said facilitates the ability for us to take a future decision. What we will be in a position to take that future decision in a timely fashion. And the reason I say that is there is a scheme being damaged at the moment, which is likely to take place during the period. So that's really why Chair and I have visited the site and, um, and the, one of the reasons that's on here is so that this council's already agreed that it would, if a scheme comes along, support it. I think this scheme is fantastic. I think it adds something, and Terry recognizes this. Every other scheme adds something as well. So I think I'm happy to second, um, Lucy's proposal. And because it's the right thing to do, the timing of signing letters is, is a case of events. And that, and we need to be predicted by events. The principle that we will do needs to be a recommendation at some point, which may go to council. So, but I do think that there's no rush for anyone to put a piece of signature on a bit of paper. And, and I think listening to Terry, that's going to be, he's going to meet Buckinghamshire Council in September. So we haven't got to rush to do this. Signing the paper won't move the water. It's actually the principle that we're going to sign the paper and then we'll be in a much better position when, as Terry said, he's got that EA monogram on it. At that point, when we sign it, it will help Terry because it'll have some authority. So I think secondly, remember that it is the right way forward at this stage.
John?
I don't think we can say Terry Cavender's project, though.
No. Yeah, I, I don't.
It's fucking can ask. Terry's going to say what suitable title.
I, I would title it, it's the partnership between Angling Water and Buckingham Canal Society to deliver um, water management in the upper roots or something like that. We can come up with a title.
That sound, that sounds more likely.
Um, um.
Can you imagine that?
Um, unfortunately, unless we suspend standing orders.
I propose we suspend that.
Yeah, okay. And we need to bear on that. Everybody, everybody in agreement, we suspend some standing orders to, um, Terry to answer.
So part of the process is something called a trial. Are you familiar with the Transportation Works Act order?
Yep.
Back in the old days, um, the same such as issues be done by private members bill. But now, um, since nineteen ninety, I'll get the year from three, four, I think it is, something like that. When the Transportation Works Act was passed, each parliamentary term of each parliamentary sitting, the, um, minister for whatever can propose a Transportation Works Act order, which like becomes an appendix to the Transportation Works Act and as part of that, you have a public inquiry. And it's exactly at that public inquiry where things like letters of support from parishes, from town councils, from Shire councils, from all the sundry industry and everything else, that they support this innovation to protect the environment, the climate, communities, house building, all that stuff for the next fifty years. That's exactly where this piece of the jigsaw is.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, do we need to vote to go back, back to, to unsuspend standing orders?
Yeah, yeah, you need to.
You can stop, yeah, yeah.
Really say, really say standing orders.
I'm about to check. Yeah, I've got this right, that you're proposing to include a reference to this project.
Yeah.
Words, don't we?
Um, the other thing I would, my members of is that, um, we're talking about a letter from the council that this committee can only support this motion.
There's no, no mention of a letter from the council in.
Not at this stage.
Just might have been at this stage that, um, it, in order for the council to support something, I'd be glad for council, it might prove to do that in due course.
Yeah. Yeah, but I think, I think saying now that we are supportive of, of all these different, um, schemes, um, and we, we completely back everybody up that, that is, is looking at all these different things as, as a positive step anyway. And Lisa.
Thanks. So where it says further feasibility studies, could have something like, um, including and then this project.
I think, I think what Lucy said was that this committee supports, um, the Buckingham Canal Society partnership with Angling Water, um, proposals.
Amongst other.
And further, and other further feasibility studies. So, yeah, can we leave it at this point? That this committee supports further feasibility studies, including but not limited to the scheme proposed by the Angling Water and Buckingham Canal Society partnership and other agencies regarding flood mitigation and prevention strategies at sites both up and downstream of Buckingham, as well as sites within the town itself.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Right, so as proposed by.
Robin's second.
Um, can we vote on the, the amendment? You know, that's unanimous.
I second your original motion.
Vote on, vote on the substantive motion then. All those in favour, substantive motion. And that's unanimous again. Okay. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank Terry for coming.
We did.
Yeah.
Always a pleasure.
Already have.
Yeah. I've already thought, very well.
I'm going to do a proper drink.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Right. Okay, we move on then to item six on the agenda, which is budgets to receive the latest figures. And if anybody's got any questions or comments, got issues or anything on that.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you. Bye.
It's just, um, um, four two two five. It says four one, um, E R, E M R, oh, oh, um, it was then covered in E M R. What, what's that mean?
E M R reserves.
E M R reserves, of course it does, yeah. So that's been covered from our E M R reserves, is that correct? Okay.
That's okay. Okay, anybody else? Are we happy to accept those?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, thank you very much. I need to get back now up to the buzzing. It's up to Linda, don't worry. Okay, so, um, item seven is, um, Buckingham Palace. Um, notes a letter from Buckingham Palace. The, the, read it.
Yeah, noted.
Noted, yeah.
Yeah, very unfortunate.
Yeah.
That the flood and its effectiveness sports, um, to the, to this extent, quite frankly, is some massive shame.
It's also, I don't know, not many council options where, where they put it, because.
Okay, well, I know it's not something for discussion because it's to note the letter and you said, um, so the next one is metal detecting on Tintwood Road Cemetery Site, which is, um, a report from Lee Estate's manager, right here.
Yeah, we've been approached by, um, by four different people, uh, to see about metal detecting at the new cemetery along the site before we start work on there. And, uh, they've given a permission agreement from the National Council of Metal Detecting. And it'll be time limited until, uh, I've put the mid, mid April, because that's when they're hoping to start on site. Uh, that may alter slightly, um, in the next couple of days, we've got the tender report coming back to us, several have an updated programme. Um, and there's other, other stipulations in there. We, we have done it before in Bolton Park a few years ago. And maybe the rest of it is self explanatory.
I've got John.
If more than one detectorist comes forward wanting to pitch to do this, how do we decide which one we choose?
The idea is we, we don't hold the call on them. It's not, um, it's not just for one person. Um, we're just opening it up to the people that want to do it at the moment.
Okay. Is it? Okay.
I've got Anya a little bit.
And I'm quite in favor of this in principle, and you know, I watched digging for Britain with, uh, with, uh, great excitement half the time, so personally, I am possibly archaeology. But what happens if somebody finds something really exciting? Will that put the project, but?
No, I don't think so. We've already done the archaeological survey of the site.
Fine.
Um, and we, yeah, and they're partly bringing.
You could fund it.
Fund also speaks if it was something exciting you said, isn't it?
Like a treasure trove, that's.
Robert.
Yeah, I mean, the common thing is they've got ten million pound liability insurance. Um, so if they find an explosive weapons, they're covered. And, um, um.
Covered what?
North, um, North Buck is a what with Second World War ordinance. Um, um, anyone who's seen them old photographs of where they stored it all down the roads in North Buck to the Pushen Arm and, and Normandy, um, but.
Yeah, because they, they found some, some magnet fish has found some.
Yeah, so, so they have got their own public liability insurance, so that's good, that, that if, um, you know, because they are metal detectors, they're not actually, um, uh, mine detectors. Um, so, um, but the thing is, it is very interesting. And we know from the reports that we've read that the archaeological, um, test pits were done. The whole site was surveyed. This is really what happens. It's called scatter. That what, what, over, over time, it'd been ploughed and stuff would have been moved from one place to another inside, and it may turn up there. The only thing I, I presume they're going to do is recall where they find it, because that's important, that we know exactly where they find it.
Yeah.
Um, because it may tell us some historical information which links to some other historical information and tells us something about it, because you will be aware that the Roman road comes from Radcliffe, it cuts across there and went up to St Rumbold. There's a Roman road there, so they're likely to be Roman and there was early Anglo Saxon pre Rome, just after Rome period, and there is also methylitic stuff in the areas there. So there may be stuff turn up. There won't be much found with a metal detector methylitic, um, uh, because it would be Bronze Age. But, um, but there is a chance they'll find it. And if, if, if it turns up, hopefully it'd be good enough to go in the Buckingham Museum.
Thank you, Robert.
Lisa. Thank you very much. Um, yeah, they sign up for the code of conduct, so that's all covered in there. Um, I, I'd be happy to support the recommendations and to just be, vote on all five. Yeah.
Thank you. Do you have a second after that?
Oh, my, no, I had the first.
Do you want papers in? Margaret. Um, so all those in favour, we're accepting all five of those recommendations. And that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Um, appendix D is the action report. Anybody got anything? Margaret?
Yeah, thank you. Don't, you know what I'm going to say, don't you, about idling outside schools?
Yeah, we need to.
What should we need to, uh, agree when?
Yeah.
And who?
Um. I mean, bye, Lucy.
So, um, Fran and I were supposed to be meeting with
Thank you.
Um, the Mother's Climate Action Network, um, Fee, however, I forgot. Um, so we are rearranging it, um, for another time. I might email Fee this morning to get something in the diary. I did also find a link on the Buckinghamshire Council website that said that groups wanting to do, um, air pollution surveys and look at anti-idling zones can have access to information from, um, an air pollution sensor. However, there was no date on the page on Buckinghamshire Council website, so I'm not sure when the information was available, whether or not that would still be the case. Um, but we are in communications with, um, the Mother's Climate Action Network about it and obviously, because I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, we decided that the officers wouldn't have time and resources to commit to it, however, we as members, as councillors, um, would take on that, um, that side of things because we do recognise the importance of it.
Mm-hmm. So I think what we need to do is outside this meeting, um, agree to, um, with, with the, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, work that one out. Yeah, if that's all right, I mean, Margaret.
Yeah, in the event that certain amongst us who are keen on this issue aren't, don't remain councillors after May the first.
Well, we had a good date before that.
Yeah, that's what I was going to.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll, I'll, I'll copy.
There's no point in doing this way into the.
No.
Well, we might not find any cars, I don't think. Like, yes, it's a great progress. Not a single car. Okay, Robin?
Yeah, I'm, not for the meeting, but I thought she, there was a letter I had to do with vehicles down there the other day from, um, it got a Thames Valley thing on it, so I'm, I'm, I'm.
Down where?
Um, outside the school around that area. I had a letter from them seeking some assistance through, um, I got, and they wrote back to me saying yes, so I followed that up. And, um, but I do think Margaret's point about idling, the one thing on here which I'm conscious of and perhaps Lee can help us with that is it was the third of April, we agreed to do the press release on the Bolton, um, Bolton Bridge. Um, are we in a position where we can, um, do that press release now with the information we've got? Or are we still awaiting information? I'm conscious that, um, called it our, um, communication strategy policy, which shows such. And we should, um, discuss these things and see whether it can actually be done now. If it can't be done, well, it can't be done. Um, but I am conscious that also if the work gets done, the press release needs to be, um, um, drafted, so that it, it, it was April, which along my way, um, it might be that Lee's got a good reason why they still haven't.
I've been chasing, there, there's an agreement that we need to have with the rights of way, um, department and council, uh, essentially saying that we will maintain our own bridge. Um, but I'm still awaiting that from their legal team and I was hoping to do the press release at the same time once we've got the wood read.
Can I do anything to help Lee? Because last time I got them to actually speak to again. So do, 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 talk and you need me to go back to the report, hurry it along a bit? We did so, because I'm glad that that corresponded, I thought he had got back with you and then it was going to be progress, so I left it, um.
It was purposeful a couple of weeks ago and they're, they were waiting for their legal department to get back to them, so.
So there's nothing I can do to help.
At this point.
No, thank you.
I just hope you. John?
Yeah, but a couple of points. One is with regards to the, uh, Tindrit Road Green Spaces. Um, looking at the patch of land that is heavily fenced off, although the mud around the area has now seemingly been constructed, there's like a sea of mud between the new playground equipment and the houses, but it appears that one of the paths seems to be perpetually flooded. I guess you've been seeing this involved there.
I was actually there this morning.
Yeah.
Looking, looking at the drainage for the cemetery, trying, we were looking for manholes.
Yeah.
That were and weren't there. Uh, so yeah, I'm well aware of it. I'm actually, we're working, so we're going to do the handover in two stages, um, hopefully. And we've, so in the first stage, it's just from Rumbold's Field and the northern play area. And then that will come on a later day, because they, they did stop because of the weather. But yeah, I was well aware of drainage.
Yeah, like you can't get paid if you're going to go to three inches of water.
We, we're not going to take it on, I believe, until or unless everything's sorted out.
Okay, great.
Yeah. It's, and your other one, John?
Well, I've got two more.
Okay, I've answered two, thank you.
Is, I do understand Lacey will doors. The walls in the sports centre will need to be completed first. I thought there were ones there.
So the walls are, are in a great bad site repair, um. So we're looking at some options, give them up to us and what we can replace that with.
And obviously we'll come on some hands in a minute, but the other one is it said, uh, the seating surgery on agenda.
Yeah, apologies, that was an error.
So what do we have?
So, so stating, stating strategy, um. I can't say who it is a, at the moment, because we're not actually going around to approaching them about it, but there are, um, there is a group in Buckingham who are keen to do things. So, um, I was going to approach them, um, I've spoken to Claire about it and Lee and Nina. I was going to approach them to ask if they want to do the survey that Lee's been, I think, got round to going around and, and doing yet. So it is still, um, it's ticking over, but it's not, it's not got there yet.
It's just on the agenda.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay.
But yeah, we, we, yeah, a few things gone, gone a bit of a while, isn't it? Um, and then same panels you mentioned.
That's on the agenda, we'll do it next time.
Yeah. Is that like next time, sort of, because it, yeah, okay. Robin?
Yeah, just clarification. I, i- i- if you go through the one where it says, um, sports pitch provision, um. All those minute numbers, does that include the, um, is that to do with the stuff of the neighbourhood plan and the stuff to do with the, um, May's Morton Road sports pitch provision, does that include that in the discussion or is that a separate discussion? Um, and it said neighbourhood plan due to go out to examination, is that none of it being discussed? Because that was, if it is to do with the, um, the proposal works on the, um, May's Morton Road three, that, that's, it's just that they've started work on the site and, um, and there are discussions going about the stuff that we have discussed, but, um, is that to do with that or is it separate to do with the stuff, additional stuff which was put in the neighbourhood plan, in which case it hasn't got anything to do with? Because the minute numbers don't mean anything to me because there's no dates on them. It might have told me it didn't if I.
I believe that's a historical one, uh, Franciscan, uh, from some time ago.
Yeah. And that'll be the proposal for actiturf, which is in the section one O six, um, agreements, uh, which date back to Chris White Moon's time.
It just, it just said neighbourhood plan due to go to the exam, I've tasted that plan. Um, so we're waiting, that's got, that's actually happened, but we're, we're on to the next stage of it, but it's not, it's not been finalized yet, is it?
No.
Um, okay. Right, so yeah, the next one is the, um, community centre. Um, so I think that's, you and Kennedy.
Yeah, well, this from, um, the town clerk, uh, updating where these are with the, uh, the maintenance bonus application. And as of yet, we haven't had any reply on our last inquiry. Um, but the rest of the report explains where we're at at the moment. Um. I have got the, so the last point, two point six is I've got, um, um, an investigation and survey going to happen next door. This mission is under the floor and we're going to take up a section and do some investigations, trying to find out what, what that is. Um, and get some answers, right?
John?
I could cry. Things are insane because people here, well, maybe around us, everybody knows that fourteen years ago, I proposed a motion, which was my first motion, that was agreed in two thousand and eleven, that we would put solar panels on, on the roof of this building. Um, I'm a little bit bemused, perplexed, frustrated and fed up that it's taken fourteen years to discover that the tiles are made of asbestos. And therefore that poses significant problems to putting solar panels, um, on the roof. I mean, it's kind of water on the bridge now, but I hope people appreciate I'm so fed up about this. Genuinely, deeply, profoundly fed up about this. I'm also worrying in the long term that we have got a white elephant here, that it's going to, that's going to cost us more and more and more money. And the description, the, the, the very detailed and graphic description you put in the report, Lee, about all these small, cruel tunnels. Um, can we find the architect to design this building and, um, do something with them?
Okay, then we can. Be, be honest with us.
Exactly.
Beyond, beyond the, uh, pay, pay grade of this committee to.
Well, I know, I know. What idiot creates the building, which would meant that you couldn't find out where leaks had occurred? Because he could be, he'd be putting that in some sort of Heath Robinson array of tubes, AKA crawl spaces, that allows water to appear in one place, where actually it's sourced about three hundred metres away in another place. I mean, this is bogus. Whoever designed this place, and you know, I mean, it's crazy. So I am wondering, just completely left field idea, let's knock it down the start.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I could sell probably through the centre with a bit more flexibility, succeeding stage would be good as well. Doing a news council advance drive for several weeks each month while achieving one's building at a new stage. Actually create a billion warfare for purpose. I mean, I love it.
I'm just going to ask it, I.
Finished it, Chad. I love this building in several ways. It's like an upturned home. It's a wonderful, beautiful, you know, little island and everything else. But boy, it's going to cost us more and more and more money over the next decades and.
To be fair, John, that isn't a, an, an agenda item, is it?
Well, we're noting the report, I can truly comment on the report and by default, we actually say.
So we can't, we can't, we can't make that decision.
No, I don't think I'll make that decision. I've just been floating it as an idea. I'm not asking, I'm not proposing a motion, we knock the building down and start again. I'm just saying, we might come to that point at some point in the future. That's all I'm saying, I'm sure.
You mean it wasn't a serious, uh, motion to lock the architect in a crawl space?
Okay, right, let's get back to.
Or get them to take down every single.
I've got Robyn and then I've got Anthony.
Just to make comment, I think the whole principle of the community centre being established, if you go back and do the his, this is the historical comment at the time, I believe from memory, um, we could have had the town hall for forty thousand pounds at the time. And, um, the people who were in positions that we are chose to build the community centre for three hundred and fifty thousand pounds. And when they built it, they hadn't got any money. That's why there had to be a management committee set up to actually run it, because that's where it is. And if you go into the building, you can walk around and there are signatures over the building where you can report and blame. Um, so that's that. But I do think this bit with the, um, the, we, I think it would be worth drilling down at some point and, and, and to know what's said in here, there's nothing we can do about it now. But I do think there is serious cost analysis to do with this building, um, which has got to be undertaken. I think on the solar panels issue, John, I think you'll find that all the questions were asked, we've had since the panels, I think we're on our fourth town clerk since the panels in fourteen years. Um, so, um, I don't think we can proportion blame anywhere with that. Everybody's done what they can do along it, but these things take time to find out. Although I do, um, I do recognise the frustration. It was just that there was various things that happened, not just to slates. There was all these other things about tariff in, tariff out, the fact that when we, when we missed the first tariff, we didn't get, there's a long history behind it, John. So I don't, I think today's comment about the reason is only one of many problems that have been in its way to be delivered, to be fair. Um, but I think the offices at all time have tried to act, um, appropriately. And, and then unfortunately, you know, when you ask a question, you wait for the response. And when you get the response, you're going to have to act on it. But we have got the community board money. And who knows, maybe we'll get to spend it on it, but I don't think it looks like that's imminent, does it, um, at the moment? But if you think perhaps another agenda at a future meeting, um, when the Buckingham neighbourhood plans agree, it might be something, got some weight. Thank you.
Honestly, you invited us to comment, so I will comment rather than making big statements. But when I read this, I, I actually read it again this afternoon in, in preparation. And I came to precisely the same conclusion that John did. This needs knocking down and starting it based on that and, and the money pit it's turning into. And my other thought was that when this, uh, building was purchased by us, I would have thought there should have been some disclosures about, um, um, what sort of tiles there were on the roof and, and so on and so forth, which I think is extremely unfortunate.
I think that you are right. However, this is historical.
I appreciate that.
There's nothing we can do to turn the clock.
I appreciate that.
Fortunately, so we have what we've got right now and it's what we, how we proceed from here. At the moment, this is a report to note.
Yes.
Therefore, um, we can't make decisions on, on anything. Um, I've got Lisa, I think, and then I'm going to have you.
Thank you. I'm just going to say to back up what you're saying, it's, um, called due diligence and that just wasn't done.
That's right.
Um, but we are where we are, so I say that we have to note it. So let's note it, remember?
Thank you.
I'm not going, I share every thought that has been aired so far. It is, um, you want to shake your head and think like, how did we get here? But we got here. I would like, well, obviously we're noting the report, I would also like, uh, to, um, thank, um, town clerk and, and Lee for all the, I mean, I know the thanks have been expressed before, but I think it's quite important that there is a lot of work that's going into just finding out what the hell is going on with this building. And it is frustrating, painstaking work, and I think we should, I'd, I'd like to recognise that.
When you chaired this committee, you, you.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. We had many conversations.
Every, 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 every meeting I've had with, um, Lee and town clerk, um, since I've been chairing this committee, there's been further, have you got anywhere with this? And, and it's just been a complete nightmare, really.
We thank Steve as well, because I know that he's had quite a lot of demons with it as well.
Yeah.
True.
Okay, so, um, I'm not sure that we've, it's going to add to anything to continue having, having a, um, further discussion of this time on it. Um, I think it probably needs to be agendaed on another, another, um.
Leave that to you, Chad.
Yeah, yeah.
Just one word I'd like to add, Jack, if I may. I read a story this week about a couple of all a, a rather expensive property in London for three and a half million quid. And they got to the point of, of having get, getting that money back because the house itself was invested with moths.
Oh, yes, so.
Which they were not told about. And therefore I think we can say we are where we are. But actually, if we were not, if the, if the situation was that we were not fully appraised of information on this building that it should have been raised about, then we may have a case potentially. So I don't think we should write off the, the, the issue that we know on the building, and we may have been settled about soon. We need to think about that. That's all I'm saying.
I'll just say one comment, John. Irrespective of the building and the price we pay for it, which is immensely low, the land value that we paid against the price we paid if we put the site, the building site and what it is, is immensely high. So even with all those things, we have options where if we hadn't owned the site, we would have no options whatsoever. It would be an empty situation, we were before, where we were, um, going into a building which was somebody else's. So irrespective of all that stuff, we wouldn't have options to do anything if we didn't own the site. So, um, the value of the site is worth far more than we pay for it. Um, so that was a good, i- i- if you were buying a piece of land, having a piece of land in the middle of Buckingham, that size, which you own, is immensely valuable. We wouldn't have any say in anything if we didn't own anything and have, owe you something, it's good to say.
Thank you, Robin.
So.
Um, so can we note that report?
Yes.
Now, can we hope that, um, um, when the, um, metasensorists get onto the, a lot, and the, the lot rooms and cemetery site, they find something of great value that would bear to use?
The cemetery hall.
You could always wish. Life's nothing if you have no hope. Life's nothing if you have no hope.
Lost crowding.
Indeed. Okay, so um news releases, um I think the only one we've got outstanding is the Bridges one, which is is until we've got um um actually um proper answer from Bucks about the moving of the right way is being um held back. Um John?
I've got an idea of another news release.
Okay.
You want it?
Go on.
Okay. I think we should say that the town council committee apparently listened with great interest, a presentation by um former councillor Terry Cavender about work underway to to um you know, do the stuff that he was talking about.
Yeah. Yeah.
You know, let's let's boost Terry.
I'll second that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Excellent. So we've got another news release.
No, we can't. I can go out this week.
That'll keep keep Robin happy. Yeah, I take I take any chairs announcements, apart from you know, we've got David's coming about Salford, which will be going to look really nice when they do come out. Um and the date of the next meeting is the 1st of April. So thank you all very much.
Thank you.